Good evening. I call the January 28, 2025 regular board meeting of Richland 2 Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Ms. Nash?
I move to approve the agenda for the January 28, 2025 regular board meeting.
The motion has been made to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Nash and seconded by Mr. Trapp to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote.
Ms. Porter, I will be voting yes, but please let them know that I'm on the line, please.
Thank you. Ms., Dr. Scott is present. She's on the phone, on the telephone, and will be voting yes for this. Can we have a hand vote? Yeah, it's, I don't know if it's, okay, never mind. We're good? Everyone have it on their screen? Okay. The vote is seven yes, zero no, zero abstentions. It passes. Now, we're moving on to the 3.1 executive session. We will move to item 3.1 executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Washington?
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing contractual matter regarding the search for proposed attorney, student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, breach of contracts, employment recommendations, and certified releases, and personnel matter regarding superintendent's evaluation and goals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Dennis to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote.
My vote is yes.
The vote is seven yes, zero no, zero not present. The motion passes, and the board will now enter into executive session. And the time is 5:34. The time is now 6:30. Do I have a motion to end executive session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trapp?
I move that we adjourn executive session at 6:21 and resume public session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. The motion to resume public session was made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mr. Dennis to end executive session at 6:21. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote.
My vote is yes, and please remind the public that I am on the meeting.
Thank you. We have Dr. Scott on the phone voting. And then, and she's already voted as yes. All right. We have, the vote is seven yes, zero no, not, and zero not present. The motion passes. We will now resume public session. Now for 4.1 inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. And I will move on into the introduction of who we have tonight. We have Ms. Kimberly N. Hardy. If you could, please stand and then touch your microphone there and make sure we're all set up, and I'm going to do your introduction. Kimberly N. Hardy is a South Carolina native who lives and works in Columbia, South Carolina. She began having seizures at a young age, but unfortunately, she was not aware of her condition. In 2017, after many years of feeling different and frustrated with her diagnosis, Kimberly was led by God to create the Hardy Hands Foundation. A 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, she wanted to create an outlet for people suffering from this epilepsy, as well as their friends and families who support them in this battle. Hardy Hands Foundation has allowed Kim to share her journey, as well as allow others to share their story and receive encouragement through her Hardy Hands Facebook page. Hardy Hands Foundation is a faith-based organization created to advocate, educate, inform, and support those with epilepsy and their families. Hardy Hands has allowed Kim to explore ways to break stereotypes about epilepsy and break the silence of those battling epilepsy at home, alone, excuse me. In 2019, Kimberly wrote her first book, Adventures of Wally and Kimmy, Wally to the Rescue. This is the first book in her series of children's books that helps explain how epilepsy can affect youth and their loved ones. It also touches on the importance of supporting animals and the role they can play in the lives of those living with epilepsy. Kimberly has traveled through and around South Carolina, Georgia, and Florida, sharing her book with schools and at conventions to provide hope and support. In 2022, the Hardy Hands Foundation received their first grant from the Epilepsy Foundation of America. This grant allowed them to go to the rural parts of South Carolina to provide support and resources to members of the communities who have epilepsy and support their family and friends who are their caregivers. Hardy Hands has been able to assist many warriors as they navigate their life with epilepsy, providing shared experiences and encouragement to them and their caregivers to keep fighting every day. Their relationship with Epilepsy Foundation of America has helped Kim become the first and only epilepsy first aid certified trainer, and has afforded her the opportunity to train members of the community, including law enforcement and first responders, educators, and administrators. There is still a lot of work to be done, and Kim, along with the Hardy Hands team, are doing the work necessary to support and educate as many people as possible. They have also made it their goal to educate those who have little or no understanding of what seizures are and how different epilepsy looks for each survivor. Kim is an everyday purple warrior that will continue to advocate for her epilepsy community. In the future, Kim would like to assist those living with epilepsy, obtain their medications, provide transportation assistance, and educate them so they know their rights and to eliminate discrimination and the stigmas surrounding epilepsy. In her spare time, Kim volunteers at her church, working with the youth, and speaks at events to raise epilepsy awareness. She's also been looking for ways to assist warriors gaining access to support animals to live a more holistic life, to assist with their seizure relief. It is her hope and prayer that a cure for epilepsy is found and shared worldwide, but until then, she and the Hardy Hands team will be spreading awareness and hope. And if you have not had an opportunity to meet Ms. Kim, I want you to know that she is the perfect person for this job. Welcome, everyone. Kim Hardy.
Thank you, everybody. Again, my name is Kim Hardy. I'm the founder and executive director of Hardy Hands Foundation and a proud Richland District 2 alumni. I wanted to come today and share a little bit of my story of what students could possibly be going through while having epilepsy and going to school and stuff like that. I was misdiagnosed as a child, and they said I had ADD, when actually, I was having staring seizures, or absent seizures, as they're called, in class. So, I would get, I would do my work, but I would, my teachers would always say, she, Kim is a great student, of course, very fabulous. But she just loses focus. It's like she's staring off into space. And what I now know is I was actually having seizures. And I want to make teachers and administrators aware that there are more than one type of seizure. All of them are not jerking and shaking that we all know about. And I want them to be able to fully assist students. I've had teachers come up to me and say, well, you know, I think about it, I think one of these, one of my students, excuse me, might have been having a seizure, but I'm not exactly sure. Well, we're at a unique time now where we can assist administrators, assist teachers, so that they'll know what to do, even the officers that are at the, SRO officers, so that they'll know what to do if they see a child having a seizure. And as far as the teachers, the classroom, because in elementary school is when I started having mine. So, when you're having a little kid, and they may not have a strong attention span and everything, it may not be ADD, they may not have a behavioral disorder, it might actually be something else. And the teacher's our first point of contact for the parents, to make the parents say, well, look out for this. So, being that we have the trainings now to be able to epilepsy certify, first aid certify, teachers and administrators, I think is a great thing that we do. That's why I wrote the book, to help kids. And you, believe it or not, they, they're, once you educate them on what it is, I think it can eliminate a lot of the bullying and stuff going on. So, I appreciate the time. I even brought my book for, for the school board, so I got you guys a copy. But I thank you for this time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kim. If you could now lead us into the pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Kim, if you wanted to leave that with Ms. Washington, she'll, make sure she gets it to us. Thank you. Unless you're staying, of course. All right. Now, we have special, 5.1, special recognitions. The agenda item in this section is special recognitions of Richland School District 2 students, staff, and schools. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call Ms. Ish Tate, our Director of Communications, to the podium. And board members, if you will join me in the front.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Moore, educators, students, and families. It's always an honor to stand before you to recognize the outstanding achievements of our students and staff. Their hard work, dedication, and excellence truly reflect our core values of learning, belonging, continuous improvement, and joy. Students and staff, please come up as I call your names to receive your certificate and pose for a quick photo. First up, Summit Parkway. At Summit Parkway, we celebrate two students for achieving perfect scores on the 2023-24 SC Ready Math Test. First, 7th grader Camden Goodwin. I'm sorry, 8th grade. A quick, quick correction, 8th grade. My child's in middle school. It's very important. Let's make sure we get the 8th grade.
Okay.
Are we good, Mom?
Next, we have Areola Odenaki. No problem. Okay. Let's give these students a round of applause. Moving on to high schools. And first up, Richland Northeast High School. 2024 graduate Will Wilson was named Richland County Player of the Year and earned the title of Mr. Football. Now, Will is currently attending college, but his parents have joined us tonight. Yes. Thank you. Next, we recognize Caroline Brandis, who achieved a perfect ACT reading subject score. Senior Pilar Teesdale received second place feature copy award Hispanic Heritage Month for the yearbook from the South Carolina Schoolastic Press Association. And she came with her own certificate. Love it. Okay, okay. And we will do this one as well. Pilar also is being recognized for outstanding achievement in yearbook feature copy, third place. Congratulations. Our next group of students come from Spring Valley High School. First up, Anaga Gauda, earned perfect composite, English, and reading subject scores on the ACT. Next, Ali Wallam, also earned perfect composite, science, and reading subject scores on the ACT. Next, Fion O'Connor, earned perfect composite, math, science, and English subject scores on the ACT. Now, I don't know about y'all, but this is making me feel like I wasn't trying hard enough on my standardized testing. Next, Imna Wudami, also earned a perfect math subject ACT score and has been named a Regeneron Science Talent Search 2025 Scholar. This is one of the most prestigious honors in the field of science for high school students, and she is the only student in the state of South Carolina this year to be recognized. Next, Henry Berg, earned a perfect reading subject score on the ACT. And now, just to keep it in the family, Max Berg, also earned a perfect English subject, math, subject score on the ACT. Let's give these students another round of applause. Our final recognition tonight is for Jackson Creek Elementary School teacher Kiana Samuel, who is a 2024 recipient of the Social Justice Award given by the Early Childhood Education Assembly and the National Council of Teachers of English. Oh, she, that's, she's right, is she? Okay, no worries. We'll get it. Thank you so much. And now, our turn to back over to Dr. Moore.
Thank you. Thank you to Mrs. Tate, and congratulations to all of our students and staff for their hard work and achievements. And also, thank you to the parents. Good job. All right. We're going to move on to 6.0 consent agenda, 6.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, Ms. Washington?
I move to approve the consent agenda for the January 28, 2025 regular board meeting.
Do I, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Ms. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. And again, for those who may have entered, Dr. Scott is present on the phone. And we have seven yes, zero no, zero abstentions. The motion passes. We will now move to... We'll now move to public participation. We have three individuals signed up to address the board, and you will be given three minutes to address the board. To assist with timing, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red, and you will hear an audible tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Before we begin, I will remind you that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive and vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation typically will be referred to a staff member for a response at a later time. We'll start with Zachary Johnson. Please come to the podium. You may begin.
Dear members of the Richland School 2 School Board and Richland 2 Community, my name is Zachary Johnson. In November 2021, I stood before you with my family and made hasty disturbing allegations against a Richland 2 administrator. I accused an assistant principal at an elementary school in Blithwood of inappropriately touching my then-six-year-old daughter. Subsequent thorough and unbiased investigations by both Richland 2 and Richland County Sheriff's Department proved these allegations to be false. Today, I stand before you to issue a long overdue apology to the wrongly accused administrator on behalf of myself and my family. The allegations I've made against her were categorically false. As a father desperate to protect my young child, I rushed to judgment based on a fantastical story spun by my daughter, which she told just prior to having to serve her first detention at school. I did not act, I did not act rationally or reasonably when I stood before this room without allowing investigators to run their course. I gave news interviews and encouraged others to spread my daughter's untrue story on social media without considering the impact my words would have had on the administrator if proven false, as they were. To the wrongly accused administrator, I am deeply sorry for the false allegations that I never should have made public. I'm sorry for the hate and threats that you received as a result of my actions. I'm sorry for the damage I've done to your career. And I am sorry for the pain and suffering you and your family have endured these last few years. This particular administrator has served students and their families in public education for more than two decades. Her extensive proven career record is evidence that she is and always has been dedicated and highly decorated educator committed to the students she serves. Therefore, my wife and I would like to conclude by extending our gratitude to the administration, the administrator, for her devoted and continued service to the children enrolled in Richland 2, Richland School District 2 and beyond. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We now have Felicia Jones. Do we have Felicia Jones? Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you to the teachers. I'm a peace ambassador and a humanitarian from New Jersey. I'm calling, coming to you today in reference to, I have two grandchildren that attend school in this district. Today, they're, why is it safer in the prison yard than the schoolyard? CDC has us at 58 to 92% across the states require some form of ADHD medication. The Center for National Institute Mental Health had it at 67%. I'm requesting that you ask the state and the government to require a blood test before anyone can get a gun in their hand. And I'm also asking you to do a drone pilot program so that the drone can patrol the school board, the school area. Okay? I was in the, the reason I'm here, I was in the Harbison Ross on Christmas Eve with 20 parents in the line, and I asked them that question. Why do you think it's okay to be safer in the prison yard, in the schoolyard? I'm upset. They looked at me like I was crazy. 10 minutes later, that four-year-old was shot in the car 20 steps from where I was. So, that's why I'm here today. Also, and I guess you all know it because you're dealing with the kids that's on the medication, and some of you are taking it yourself, as well as, I asked them for a class action lawsuit to be filed against the chemical companies for polluting the air. The water, the air, and the food is tainted, which causes the mental illnesses. And you all should know that, your teachers, you should know this from doing statistics. They need to sue DuPont-Dow for their forever chemicals that are poisoning the environment. And if you don't know it, you should know it. Okay? So, the next thing is the human trafficking. And I'm sorry, I had went to the school, school transportation department. I got this from the FBI, asked them to, two years ago, to have them put this on the school bus. A child was raped on the school bus, the backseat of a school bus from September to February in Texas. That's when I went and got this and asked them to show this to the parents and ask you guys to put this on the school, have it scrolling across for the kids to have access because they're reaching the kids through trafficking, through taxiing. Okay? So, I'm 67. I have nine grandchildren. Some in New Jersey, two are here. So, that's why I'm speaking today. And I have an Article 16 from the United Nations and the World Health Organization because I've sent stuff to the United States and they're ignoring the situation that we're living in today. And it's not just the parents, that's the prison, school to prison pipeline. 60, 90% of your kids are on medication, 90% of the prisoners are. Thank you. And I'll be back because I'm not done.
Thank you.
And I will leave you a copy of it. And have a blessed day.
Do we have Ms. Stephanie Johnson? Please step up. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Moore, and everyone in attendance. My name is Stephanie Johnson. I am the NEA Director for the South I am the NEA Director for the South Carolina Education Association. I'm here today on behalf of the Richland County Education Association to express our sincere gratitude to the Richland School District Two Board of Trustees for your service and dedication to our schools, students, and community. As we celebrate School Board Appreciation Month, it is important to recognize the time, effort, and heart you pour into making decisions that shape our future of education in the district. From setting policies that ensure academic excellence to addressing the unique challenges our schools face, your commitment to our children's success is clear. Your role is not an easy run, requiring countless hours of preparation, discussions, and difficult decision-making. It's often a thankless job, but I want you to know that your work does not go unnoticed. Every initiative improved resource or better outcome for our students is a testament to your dedication and vision. On behalf of the Richland County Education Association, we want to say thank you for making a difference. We are grateful for all that you do, and we hope that you continue working, we hope to continue working with you in the future to the benefit of all staff and students. As a small token of our appreciation, we gifted you all bund cakes and your small gift bags to enjoy. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. And thank you to all those who use their time today to come speak to us. Thank you. All right, moving on to 8.0, voting on executive session items. The board will now vote on items discussed in executive session. 8.1, contractual matter regarding search for proposed attorney regarding a property matter. May I please have a motion on the contractual matter?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Dennis?
I move to approve the contractual matter regarding the search for proposed attorney as presented in executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis and seconded by Ms. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. Repeat your motion, please.
I move to approve the contractual matter regarding the search for proposed attorney as presented in executive session.
Do you see?
Yeah, it wasn't there when I did it earlier.
Okay.
Does he have to include the specific name?
Oh, yeah.
You need to say the name. One second, Ms. Washington. Can you rescind your motion?
It's already been seconded. You can't rescind. This thing's acting up. I ain't got it.
You want to use mine?
See, I'm telling you, these things are not working right.
Okay.
There now.
Yep.
Yep. So, I move to authorize the superintendent to retain the services of Richardson, Plowden, and Robertson, PA for a property matter to include real estate transactions pursuant to the terms and conditions of the agreement.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
And now it comes up.
All right, Ms. Washington, do you have that? Okay. No, it was seconded by Ms. Nash. The motion was made by Mr. Dennis, seconded by Ms. Nash. Board members, any discussions or questions? Board members, please vote. I think we had a connection issue. But the vote is seven yes. The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Dennis. And now for 8.2, student appeals. May I please have a motion regarding student appeals?
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, Ms. Williams?
I move to uphold the appeal for student number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Williams and seconded by Ms. Nash. Sorry, what's that?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Are we upholding the student or administration?
Upholding administration.
Upholding administration decision. Thank you for clarity.
All right, so we have a motion to uphold the administrative decision for student number one made by Ms. Williams and seconded by Ms. Nash. Do we have any further discussion? All right, board members, please vote. Is it us? Okay, can we take a hand vote, please?
My vote is yes.
Board members, please give us a hand vote. Dr. Scott is voting in favor. Yes. Please raise your right hand to give your hand vote, please. That's if you're in favor. Okay? All opposed? All right, we have six yes, one opposed. Okay. We're now moving to student admission requests into the district's adult education program. Do I have a motion regarding the district's adult education program?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Trapp?
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students one through three.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. The motion passes. Now for 8.4, breach of contracts. May I please have a motion regarding the breach of contracts?
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, Ms. Washington?
I move that we direct the administration to not make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding the professional employee number one who breached their employment contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington to not report for employee number one and seconded by Ms. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. The motion passes. Do I have another motion for breach of contracts?
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, Ms. Washington?
I move that we direct the administration not to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding professional employee number two who breached their contract.
Is there a second? The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Ms. Nash. Is there any discussion? We have seven yes, zero no, zero abstentions. The motion passes. Now for 8.5, may I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, Ms. Nash?
I move to approve the employment recommendation for employee number one on page two.
I'm sorry, repeat that motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the employment recommendation for employee number one on page number two.
Got it. Is there a second? The motion has been made by Ms. Nash and seconded by Ms. Washington. Is there any discussion?
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, Dr. Scott?
Yes, I would like to share, I will not be supporting this motion, and I want to share why. I truly believe that we have so many capable employees in our school district that we could better use the monetary money that we will actually be giving to hire someone to do the job that I feel that many of our in-house employees can actually do. And I'm going to stand by what my email says, putting students first. So when I think about hiring an employee to do a job that that department actually can fill, it just breaks my heart because we have so many programs and so many things that we actually could do with that money when we're putting students first that we could use. So I will not be supporting this motion, and hopefully we'll have a discussion to better utilize some of our resources and our taxpayers' money when we have capable employees in the district in-house that can fill positions for a temporary moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Okay, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one no, zero abstentions, and the motion passes. Do I have another motion regarding employment recommendations?
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, Ms. Nash?
I move to approve all of the other employment recommendations and certified releases as presented on pages one through six.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been made by Ms. Nash, seconded by Ms. Washington. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. All right, the vote is seven yes, zero no, zero abstentions. The motion passes. Now for 8.7, no, I'm sorry, 8.6, personnel matter regarding superintendent's evaluation goal. May I please have a motion on the personnel matter regarding the superintendent's evaluation goal?
Madam Chair, Vice Chair?
Yes, Ms. Nash?
I move to approve the superintendent's goals as presented. This includes specific objectives, evidence, and targets for each goal.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Nash, seconded by Ms. Williams. Is there any discussion? The vote is seven yes, zero no, zero abstentions, and the motion passes. Now for 9.0, new business, no action requested. We'll now move to 9.0, new business, no action requested, item 9.1. The agenda, this agenda item in this section is an overview of the academics report on the preschool program. Dr. Moore?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask Ms. Evans, Ms. Richardson, and Ms. Robbins to come to the podium. Board members, we are here today to talk about our preschool programs, and they are going to give you a wonderful update on where we're at and what we're doing to ensure that we start our youngest students off on the right foot so that when they enter kindergarten, they are ready for kindergarten and ready to excel. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Evans.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Moore. Let us also say happy School Board Appreciation Month, so congratulations for that. My colleagues and I, we are delighted to share just a little tidbit about the preschool programs within Richland School District Two. While each of us leads an individual program, we always work collaboratively to ensure that there's a quality learning experience being provided for all of our early learners. We're going to begin by sharing information about each of our programs, and then we'll highlight some specifics about preschool in Richland Two. So to begin, you'll see the first acronym, CFCD. I wanted to say that that stands for the Center for Child Development. I think we often forget that, we take for granted that everyone would know that. But my name is Quinn Evans. I serve as the Director of the Center for Child Development, or CFCD as it's affectionately known. While we're waiting for that to come up, we are blessed to have 32 4K classrooms in 19 locations throughout the district. We have grown tremendously over the years. We have a capacity of 636 students, and we are at that capacity. We make sure that we maintain a waiting list so that whenever a spot comes open, we are able to fill that very quickly.
So we also have preschool special education classrooms here. We have currently 28 classrooms serving three- and four-year-old students with disabilities. We have 28 certified staff and 56 classified staff. Those are teaching assistants working in those programs. And we currently have 305 students and growing.
Our Montessori program is housed at Pontiac Elementary School. We serve 74 three- and four-year-olds in five primary classrooms, and we have certified and classified assistants in each classroom.
So each of the programs are unique in that there are different eligibility requirements. For the Center for Child Development, a child must meet one of these criteria. And it could be the family is eligible for free or reduced lunch, could be a lower developmental readiness as determined by a screener that we administer to all of our applicants, or other identified risk factors. Just because a child qualifies though, as you saw, we had that capacity of 636. Each year, we have anywhere between 800 and 1,000 applicants. So those that are not immediately qualifying go to that waiting list. Those that are qualifying, we rank order those applications and make sure that we get those children in if we're able to. Find them another school that's fairly close to move those children into if we're unable to, offer them a spot at their zone school, and then they move on to the waiting list. And as I said, when a spot comes open, we try to get that quickly filled.
In our preschoolers with disabilities, criteria is based on federal law, so IDEA, and students meet eligibility criteria, and all students who meet that criteria are served. We don't have a waiting list because we meet the needs of all students who are eligible.
As a magnet program, the Montessori participates in the Choice Lottery that runs twice a year. It's a random selection process. We do have a very active waiting list for our program. I want to share with you some of... I want to share with you some of the highlights of our achievements over the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. When looking at our preschool special services program, we had fifteen preschool students that were dismissed from all special education services. Twenty preschool students with disabilities transitioned from a special ed classroom to a general education classroom. When looking at our Center for Child Development and Montessori program, the data that we're building from is the MYICD's data. And that is a, I'm sorry, that is an assessment that is given twice a year, and it's a state assessment in literacy and in math. Fourteen percent, excuse me, five percent of our Center for Child Development students scored in strong process, progress tier in the fall for the skill of rhyming. By the spring, that number increased to thirty-one percent. Fourteen percent of the students in child development scored in strong progress tier in the fall for the skill of oral counting, and by the end of the year, fifty-one percent were in that tier. So that's great improvements. For Montessori and the skill of rhyming, twenty-seven percent of the students scored in strong progress in the fall, and by the end of the year, eighty-three percent were in the strong process, progress, I cannot say that word tonight, sorry, strong progress category. For math, for the skill of quantity comparison, forty-one percent of our students were in the strong progress tier, and then by the end of the year, ninety-four percent of our students scored there.
So behavior, that's always one that I think everybody is interested in. As you know, preschoolers come to school, and all children come to school from a variety of backgrounds. And for some preschoolers' participation in any time of formal schooling, it's their first experience. And so we focus on promoting their social and emotional competence through the high-quality learning environment that we provide, and also those nurturing relationships. We have up here the pyramid, which is known as those multi-tiered system of supports that is used for our academics as well as for behavior. And so we implement this multi-tiered system of support, or this pyramid model, so that at the base, all of our children are receiving that high-quality learning experience. They are experiencing daily routines, rituals, those procedures, learning how to be in school. And those children that might need some extra supports, as we move up the pyramid, they receive those supports. We do know that all behavior is a form of communication. And young children often communicate not through words, but through actions. And as we said, they are just learning what it means to be in school. So oftentimes, we'll come together as a group to talk about what is being communicated, and how can we best support this child? What supports does this child need? We've also begun to see an increase in challenging behaviors, more and more of those. But again, it is our responsibility, just like we teach them how to walk in a line down the hallway, how we teach them to take turns, we're teaching them what it means to be in school, have those pro-social behaviors. And so from that, we have decided to convene a committee of stakeholders. It has involved 4K teachers, preschool teachers. It involves some administrators, some MTSS staff, and we have begun looking at creating a preschool progressive discipline document that will support teachers as well as school administrators so that you will know how to pay attention to those nuances of what it means to be three and four, and what a three- and four-year-old might demonstrate behavior-wise cannot be compared to what a third, or a fourth, or a fifth grader might do behavior-wise. And it is all about teaching and those interventions that we're going to provide in support of school readiness as they transition into kindergarten. We are hopeful that that document will roll out next school year, so stay tuned.
So I want to talk a little bit about some of the outreach and the partnerships that we have in the community. So as a preschool team, we partner with many organizations out in the community. We look at the South Carolina Partnership for Inclusion. So that's including all students in general education programming. We work with the University of South Carolina in their academy of helping train teachers to work with all students in both the general and special education settings. We have participated and also hosted many community events where we have asked the daycare providers and preschools out in the community to come in and do some professional development. We've worked directly with many of the daycares in the community as a resource. We've provided training, consultation, and work with families and students that are participating in those programs that are in the community of Richland Two. We've done some lunch and learn types of activities. As a group, we do parent workshops. We have provided evening events where we've asked parents to come, and we provide information about general development or things that they may want to do in their home to work with preschool students. And we also do home visits, which we think is very important for us, particularly for young children, three- and four-year-olds, where we're visiting the family, getting to know that family, building on that parent-school partnership. And so that's a big component of our programs. We participate in some other community organizations like Countdown to 4K, Richland County First Steps, that also offers that early childhood experience, First for Five, Prometal Pre-K. And then particularly when we're talking about identifying students that live in our community who may need extra help or special services, we are a part of BabyNet, which is the early intervention network, and we do child find. So we are out in the community, the community knows about our services. We work with the pediatrician offices, and all just the local community organizations that know that we offer services here in the school district. So that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And board members, I have to say, I've gone in those pre-K classrooms the first week of school. Whew. And then I've gone in them, you know, about the end of the first nine weeks, beginning of the second nine weeks. It is significantly different environment. The change that takes place in those classrooms with our teachers is phenomenal. I mean, that first day was like scary, but watching what they have become and now, I see them, and recently at one school, I said to the students, I said, "What, how old are you?" It was in the Montessori class, and they were telling me, I said, "Are you sure you're not third graders?" They're like, "No, we're pre-K." I'm like, "Okay." So I am so proud of the work that this team does. And I just want to remind you of one statistic that they gave, because this is why we do what we do. The twenty preschool students with disabilities that transitioned from their special education classroom into the general education setting. That's why it's so important for everybody that's listening that we reach our students early. And it's through those partnerships that we have, especially with the pediatricians, that helps them, parents to understand, if you are seeing that your child has a need, we are here to help you and provide you with information and knowledge. We've got a little project we're working on. We're not ready to roll it out yet, but I know two board members know it because I said it at a breakfast that we were working on this. And it's really just to equip parents. We have a lot of young parents who may not have that extra support and not know where to go or who to go to, and we want to give them information as soon as the child is born, as to what they should do, what they, where they can go to get information. Because the earlier we get children ready, the better it is for the student throughout their learning experience. So thank you very much to our Quinn Evans, the Director of CFCD, Lisa Richardson, Director of Preschool Special Education, and Molly Robinson, Magnet Lead at Pontiac Elementary. And I would be remiss in saying this, I know there have been some news reports out there about school districts removing students in pre-K and a high rate of suspension. Well, as you can see from our data, that is not the case here in Richland Two. We do everything that we can to support that student, and more importantly, to support that parent and the family so that they can be partners with us. And with that, we'll open it up for discussion.
Any comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Dennis?
Have we noticed any absenteeism issues in this program?
Yes, yes. And that is something we have been working on for a couple of years now. Parents, when they join preschool, they participate in an orientation, one, just to learn about kind of the nuances of school, but then also to learn about the program itself. And that is something we really spend a lot of time focusing on. Parents who have had their children in a preschool or a daycare setting for birth to three are very used to dropping their child off when they're ready to and picking their child up when they're ready to. So we spend a lot of time educating parents on, you're getting on the school train now, learning what it means to be at school from eight, or seven-thirty now, seven-thirty until the end of the day. So, but that is something we are still working with families on. Also, if it's their first experience in school, a lot of sickness, a lot of sickness. So we do want if they're very sick to stay home. But those are the things we're trying to really give parents some education about.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, I want to say thank you again for your thoroughness in your report. Like Dr. Moore said, the research says that there's a lot of suspension for pre-K students and our 3K pre-K students. And I'd like to show you appreciation of how much you pay attention to that discipline needs to be differentiated for our preschool students. And that in itself is very helpful, and acknowledging that and taking the action to move forward with that. And it shows again in our data say that. So I really appreciate that, and we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
I believe, Ms. Washington?
Yes, so first, I do want to say also thank you to hear your numbers in the data where you're showing that you're transitioning students, especially for special ed, into, you know, getting them the support they need so that they're prepared academically. I want to say thank you, because that is something that we talk about a lot, and the importance of it, and the dedication of your team. I want to say kudos to the 3K and 4K teachers across this district. When I go to elementary schools, that is the first classroom I want to go to, is to the 3K classroom. And to go in and to see students, they're holding books, they're conferencing with teachers and talking about learning, and to hear those conversations, it speaks volumes of the preparation that's happening in our 3K and 4K classrooms. I did have a question, because I'm always thinking future-forward. And I hear a lot about the waitlist, that is a complaint, but it's not just a complaint for Richland Two, it's for all daycares across the northeast Richland County. And we talk about, I talk about this with a lot of people in our community, that it's not just our issue, it's almost everybody's issue. So what are some of the plans that we've been talking about as a district for expanding our early childhood programs to be able to meet the growing needs of our district populations? I don't know if y'all have been driving around, but every time I see tractors and dirt, I am like, "We need to talk about this." So I do want to know, what are the district's plans? Have you all started having some of those conversations about expanding those early childhood programs just to meet the needs of those students?
Yes, we have the conversations. It's, probably the response is to these kinds of questions all the time is space and money. Space and money. But you hit the nail on the head. This is very much a need, not just in our community, but across the country. COVID really did a number on small, family-owned childcare centers, and those couldn't reopen. And so we have a lot of birth to school age, birth to four, where there isn't anywhere for them to go. First Steps has recently had some additional funding to come, so I have heard that there's going to be some additional 4K classrooms opening up around in the county as well as the state, but that is the answer, it's space and money.
Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Nash?
Madam Vice Chair, I just wanted to say, you guys have a really good synergy about yourselves. You're a triple threat, and I just appreciate your whole presentation. Can't wait to come visit you guys, I'm sure it's going to be awesome. Thank you so much.
And I just want to check in, Dr. Scott, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I don't.
Okay, Mr. Dennis?
Board member Washington, she talked about the issue of space and money. Are we noticing that, are any of these pre-Ks in some of the schools that are kind of starting to bust at the seams? Is there any, have y'all thought of any ways to move around the program to other schools that might not have as much population of students?
You're just getting me, I think, to answer the question. Yes, we have, in fact, we have done that. We have moved classrooms that may be the enrollment, over the years, over the course of the last few years, where the enrollment was lower and the need in other areas was higher, and so we will do that. As you can imagine, that can be difficult if it's transitioning from year to year. But we have, especially when Blythe Wood started to grow so much, we did move out that way more. So yes, we have looked at that some. We also have some guidelines about spacing within the classroom, things that we're required to do as far as heights of counters and, you know, having access to, immediate access to the outside and those kinds of things. So there's just some additional things we have to consider whenever we're looking at placing classrooms.
Thank you very much. I just want to say your presentation is very good. Thank you for all the insight.
Thank you for your comments and reporting the successes as well. I know early intervention is key, and that's why you're getting these long waitlists. And we know that research says that when students start early, that we're going to see the results. So I agree with the community and everyone that's reached out to us about how they wish we had more space, and I know that's attributed to the success stories that you all have. So thank you for all that you do. Ms. Williams, you have more?
I have one more question, I'm going to keep it short. It's very simple, not very thought-provoking. But what would, if you had one wish, what would your wish be for your ne-
Be careful what you ask.
Speak now, forever holds your peace, but I want to know.
A Richland Two Early Childhood Center.
Thank you for that. We are going to move to nine point two, Operations Report, Safety and Emergency Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask that Mr. Mark, oh, Ms., Mrs., Mr. Mark Claston, our Safety Director, come to the podium to present to the board. When I see Lydia, I'm like, "Am I in trouble?"
Press your button on your microphone.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Presiding Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, of course, our Superintendent. I'm here to give an overview of the Office of Safety and Emergency Services, and really a wide overview of what we do and what our responsibilities are. And because we haven't practiced our choreography, Lydia and I haven't practiced our choreography like Ms. Evans did in her, the presenters before us, I'll be kind of manning this microphone to the end. But I have with me Lydia Williams, who is the Safety Services Manager. My Emergency Services Manager, who is Dwayne Robinson Senior, is not here this evening. He had a prior commitment there too. But some of the things that we'll cover here are in their wheelhouse individually, Safety Services and Emergency Services. I think you have some documents in front of you, but I'll be kind of wheeling all over the place somewhat. I do want to make note that on some of the documentation, you will see that there is a reference to safety monitors. Let me just start off by saying that we have been re-titled. We were previously known as the Security Department, and I think everyone referred to the individuals employed there as security officers or guards or something along those lines, or we felt it necessary to really kind of right-size our title and make it so it's obvious and appropriate to what we actually are responsible for. So the office is now the Office of Safety and Emergency Services. The individuals who are assigned there are not security officers, et cetera, they are safety assistants. And our supervisors are no longer this militarized captains and lieutenants, but rather they're supervisor ones and supervisors- supervisor ones than supervisors two. Just, just to start off, that's one of the main differences there. The Office of Safety and Emergency Services is pivotal to maintaining a safe and secure learning and working environment. It operates proactively and in collaboration with emergency management and law enforcement partners. And that includes South Carolina EMD, Emergency Management Division, and of course, our Richland County Sheriff's Department, who we work with arm in arm. We do that to maximize emergency readiness and response in our schools and ensure the safety of our students and staff. I'll just go kind of section by section and give a, a general idea about what it is that we do. And as far as emergency planning and preparedness, I think most people understand that we are responsible for assisting with the creation and establishment of emergency plans, both district, district-wide emergency plans and the individual schools or campuses themselves. They each have an individualized emergency plan because when you are responding to an emergency event, it really has to be personalized, where you may need to go to, who you may need to contact. So, certain things need to be personalized. Generally speaking, we have pretty much a standard protocol across the district. We also are responsible for reunification plans and planning. We've had even reunification training, which is in some incidents that occurred nationally come to mind where the, the complaint or the concern after post-incident is how difficult disorganized reuniting the children back with the parents has become. So, we have really, in my opinion, the best in the state reunification plan. And I, I don't mind, I say that all the time and I stand by that. We, we have, as far as information is concerned for the entire district, for the principals and, and those people who are assigned to safety in the individual schools, we maintain our safety and emergency Google Drive, which has all of the resources, a repository for the resources. It is accessible to the safety teams, the admins and the safety teams in those particular schools. Got training documents that are in it, compliance materials that are also in it. And as a matter of fact, something came up today about some of the emergency equipment. We have operation manual on some of the emergency equipment that is also maintained in that Google Drive. So, as far as fire and safety compliance is concerned, and I'm trying to speed up a little bit because that clock is going pretty fast. We have a fire and safety review rubric and we are responsible for the FTC, the Fire Department connections, marking them. We also maintaining the fire lanes themselves. And as part of that, we do some parking kind of maintenance there. So, if there are vehicles parked at the fire lanes themselves, we, we oftentimes will end up labeling them or putting a sticker on them. We do some sprinkler door labeling and risers, basically fire equipment. We're, we're monitoring it, managing it, labeling it. We are responsible for a whole host of Department of Education, state forums, 4B Model Safe School Checklist, which comes through the board, a component of it comes through the board. We have Fire Contract Communication. We are the liaison for Fire Marshals. And we have our fire irregularity reporting, which we have to do, maintain and give to the state as well. Of course, everyone knows we're responsible for the safety screenings that occur at our five high schools. And also, we conduct safety screenings on a random basis, pop-up basis at the, at middle schools. And we have continued to do that. Stair chairs, which I mentioned a few seconds ago, our safety vehicle fleet, those vehicles that are used by safety and emergency personnel, our vehicle access point monitoring. That, that's really about the fire lanes and also entry into our schools and making sure that the, the doors are secured and fastened and that people cooperate with going through the main entrances. We have a 24/7 dispatch operations. We are responsible with the distribution and maintenance of our district radios, the two-way radios that we've upgraded the radios in the past year and a half. So, all of the schools have upgraded radios and we're responsible for the maintenance of those items as well. We conduct monthly yearly training. And also, we participate, Safety and Emergency Services participates in annual SCADRO training. South Carolina Association School Resource Offices, we're privileged enough to have, both of our managers are on the board for SCADRO. So, our safety assistants all go to the SCADRO training once a year. Of course, we have our camera system, our emergency notification system, that's Synthegix project. We remain on the cutting edge and in the forefront in the state in as far as safety technology, which we will continue with. Thank God I'm from New York because I can talk fast like this. We have our monthly newsletter and also we have a monthly meeting that occurs with safety-related personnel in the schools themselves. Special events and athletic support that we do, you'll see us at the different events, events that are here sometimes, events that are at stadiums. You'll have safety managers there along with some of the safety contractors outside. We serve as the SRO's liaison and we conduct those meetings with the SROs as well. So, to wrap it up, the Office of Safety and Emergency Services ensures a safe, prepared and well-supported environment for all district stakeholders. And I'll return it back to.
Thank you, Mr. Claxton. And you did speed it up. We appreciate that. But in all seriousness, our safety office and their emergency services, as we have recently experienced several wintery mixed events, they have done a remarkable job. We get that information in a very timely manner. And then they make sure that when everybody else is home, they are still out and about. They are checking our buildings. They're also helping assist with the roads, staying in communications with the emergency management office for our county as well as the state. And they are doing everything they can to make sure that they create a safe and caring environment for our students at the schools as well as our employees. And so, with that, we will open it up for questions.
Board members, anyone? Mr. Dennis?
So, I just want to say thank you very much for this presentation. One of the things that a lot of people don't know about me, when I was in the military, I was doing your job for Cadena Air Base. It is one of the toughest jobs and a thankless job because nobody knows that you're doing it and nobody knows what's being done. I'd like to say thank you for everything. And with my knowledge and that, if you ever need anything, just kindly reach out and definitely let Dr. Moore know because I'm a wealth of knowledge in that. And I just want to say thank you for keeping our children and our staff and us and everybody here in this building safe and every other building we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Ms. Nash?
You could have went to three point five speed. I believe in you. I'm just kidding. Well, I was just going to ask, because I know at one point, I know you guys were looking for like volunteers and stuff like that. Is that something that you still do? Like?
Let me just say that you have blessed us with promoting Office of Safety and Emergency Services. So, for the first time, I guess in a long time, we, we are adequately staffed at this time.
Are you serious? We did it? Yes. Right on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that was all.
And thank you to Human Resources as well. I don't want to forget Dr. Forster at all.
All right, mic, mic drop. Any other board members? Dr. Scott, did you have something you wanted to add?
I do. I sent you a text to let you know that I was waiting. First of all, I want to say thank you for the presentation. I do have a few questions and I think you just answered the first one. I wanted to know when was the title change made and why did we decide to make it? Just curious.
It was sometime last year and we made it just to kind of appropriately title what we do. I think some people get confused by a security title and think more along the lines of physical security. And we're fortunate enough to work with our law enforcement partners for the physical security aspect of, of safety and emergency services. And our focus really is on providing as much assistance and structure and guidance to the events that occur, the athletic events, special events. We provide presence here. We're eyes and ears and not necessarily, not a physical security force. So, I think people are less confused by our current title. And they, I think they were a little bit confused by, they didn't even know whether to call us security officers, agents or what it was. So, I think we're, it's clearer now what it is that we're responsible for.
Okay. And Ms. Porter, I do have three questions, but I know I can only ask two and you give everyone else an opportunity and then you come back to me. So, I will go with my second question. I'm very excited that we are using some Tinge. And it's been great. And anytime I go to safety conferences, you know, there are school districts that are not a part of this and not on board. But I'm just wondering, if you can give me a little bit feedback on that, how's it working? And have we had to really use those emergency buttons often?
Well, I'll start off by just thanking the board for approving us acquiring the Synthegix. We are, as you may know, as you, I'm sure you know, we are the lighthouse district in South Carolina. We are the fir-, we were the first and I think we may still be the only ones in South Carolina who are using the Synthegix emergency notification system. It's important to note that some recent events in other states, they used Synthegix as part of their incidents that occurred on their campuses themselves. As far as we're concerned, it is a very helpful and valuable tool. It's very important. It provides us seconds, valuable seconds to improve on response to locations if there is a need for assistance. And because it is kind of integrated with the, the 911 system itself, if, if there is a higher level alert, for this example, God forbid, an active shooter, there is an automatic notification and response by our law enforcement partners. So, we, we love the system itself. And like I said, we, we remain on the cutting edge of this type of safety technology. And I'm grateful to, to those people who are responsible for allowing us to obtain it.
Do we have any other board members before Dr. Scott concludes?
I would like to ask something, but Dr. Scott can go ahead if she'd like to.
Dr. Scott, will you finish with your third question, please?
Oh, absolutely. And I know that you guys are doing a great job with keeping our students and our employees safe. But I guess my question would be, how are you keeping your staff and your employees safe? And I would just go back to the severe weather day that we had. How are your employees safe when we have things like that? Is it certain positions that you actually send out to look to make sure that everything is on point? For an example, I don't, I don't know your titles, but is it like all sergeants or all captains go out to make sure the roads are safe? And then the other part of that is, and when that happens, because everyone wants to be safe, period. When that happens, if an employee calls in, is that something that's actually taken away from their time that they have? Or do you guys have time built into your program where we don't have too many severe weather days? So, do we allow them to miss that day because we know they're going to make it up some other kind of way? Or is that personal time or their personal leave that's taken away from that? So, first question is, how are you guys being safe? Because we want to make sure that you're safe. The second part of that is, who's in charge of actually going out? Is it the, all the captains, all the sergeants, or just you and Ms. Williams? And then thirdly, do they have to use their leave time? Or do we have time built in to show them that we do appreciate their time and what they do? And do we allow them to miss that day because we don't have too many and they make it up on the back end?
I think as far as our, the safety of those people in the Office of Safety and Emergency Services is concerned, a lot of our safety comes from our training and preparation and being prepared to respond to different, to different incidents that make her, or different occurrences or different weather patterns that may happen. Unfortunately, Dwayne Robinson, our Emergency Services Manager isn't here, but Dwayne does a lot of the weather monitoring and he's checking with three or four different sources and trying to kind of outdo meteorologists, if you will. And we share that information not only with the, the wider district and Dr. Moore and executive staff, but with our personnel as well. And then on those times, if you're talking about the weather situations themselves, there are some times when we have to make sure for our safety that we don't have those cars on the road at different times depending on the circumstances themselves. So, that's point one. But preparation and training and readiness keeps us safe. Two, we, we all participate in, in, in securing the entire district. So, there are occasions when there'll be safety assistants that are out, most often. There, along with those safety assistants will be the safety supervisors, one and two. And it, it may surprise you to know that myself and the managers also spent a lot of time at different hours responding back to the district and going out as well and providing that additional support itself. And as far as the days off are concerned, or if someone needs to call out, we're reasonable and we're rational human beings. And if someone needs to call out, if they're having difficulty making their way to work, we may do what we have. And sometimes, like I said, myself or the managers will have to back up or assist or will call other people in to cover. So, there is coverage 24/7, 365. And I want to emphasize that we always have safety and emergency services coverage regardless of weather condition, whatever's going on. Whatever's going on. Oh. That means for me to shut up. It's talking back to me. I hope that answered your three questions, Dr. Scott.
It did. Thank you so very much. And again, thank you for all that you, you do as well as your team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp.
Yeah, my question is along the same lines as Dr. Scott just asked you about. I was very curious because you know, people obviously are very critical of anything we do when it comes to school and, and bad weather. But do we go out and physically inspect the sidewalks and the parking lots at our schools? And does that, does that factor into the, the decisions we make on whether we open, or we go to in-person learning or not?
That, that very much will factor into, well, that's actually above my pay grade, but yes, do we go out and check and then provide that information just based on our findings? It is common practice that, you know, we work under the operations COO, Will Anderson, Will will be in contact with you all day and asking for updates all day. So, yes, so yes, we provide that information as best as possible. And he kind of motivates you sometimes to get out there and take a look.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Because really, that, that, the thing is, that's one of my biggest concerns with having this kind of weather because the streets may be clear, but sidewalks, you know, it's not, if someone slips and breaks their hip, that's a big deal. Or if someone slides into another car in the parking lot, that's a big deal. I, I'd just like to mention that I'm one of these nuts that goes out. I went out Wednesday morning to my truck to evaluate the community, you know, as a community service. And of course, I had to go to QT and get a Diet Coke, but that's not, that's not the important part.
And just to add on to that, because I want to give a compliment to Maintenance Division and, and part of the inspiration that Will gives to the maintenance as well to get out there and like this past time salting and preparing the, the walkways and, and, and the roadways. So, maintenance plays a valuable service in regards to safeguarding those surfaces.
And I saw a lot of unsafe things Wednesday period. I mean, like Wednesday night I went out and there was a sidewalk to a restaurant that were open, but the sidewalk had 12 feet of ice between it and the front door. And I thought, y'all are taking a great risk, a great liability. But I, I would be terribly concerned if we were allowing our students to go out if there was a possibility. I saw Wednesday morning, a City of Columbia Fire Department pickup had run into the front of a Fairfield electric truck. It was undoubt, they were undoubtedly both out on official business, but they still run into each other. So, be careful, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp, for going above and beyond during board member appreciation month. I wanted to also thank you for everything that your department does. I think I saw you on television giving a briefing once and I was scared for a moment. I said, hold on, where are you, where's he going? But I'm so glad to see you here.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do. And I think that's it for me. So, we are going to move to the discussion of board priorities, goals and actions. Ms. Washington?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So, board members, just wanted to present to you a summary of what we all came up with for what we would like to prioritize and put into action based off of our activity for, in our discussion from December the 17th. The four air- The four areas, just a reminder for the public, 2023-24 school year, the board did a workshop, um, with a con-, a consultant. It was also along with the district administration. And we selected four areas that we wanted to focus on and prioritize for our strategic plan. And that's fiscal accountability, human capital, safety and security, and student outcomes. Um, and we, I have also discussed that we wanted to make sure that we continue to prioritize board governance. So as you can see here, we have our priority statements along with our actions. For fiscal accountability, we're going to continue to do audit analysis, um, and getting those updates on the budgets. Um, because as you know, we approve a budget. Uh, this year we had a budget update in the fall and that let us know where we were with filling certain positions and where certain priorities were uh, based off of the budget that we approved. We want to continue to do that to make sure that we are drilling down and meeting the needs of our students. Uh, we have a priority statement for human capital. Um, and the three actions that, uh, the board decided that we wanted to focus on is uh, create, making sure that we support advancement within the district. And we want to discuss what is that going to look like from a board perspective? Of course, it'll look like us supporting and find, uh, funding those positions. But we do want to make sure that we are supporting administration and providing those opportunities for our employees. Uh, employee satisfaction and working conditions. We've talked about having town hall meetings and, uh, this is something that we want to, we want to put into practice, um, and get that feedback from our employees. Compensation, including bonuses. We want to continue to put our employees at the forefront and making sure that you're being compensated for the work that you're doing. Um, and including those bonuses to continue to show our appreciation. For safety and security, um, we want to, our priority statement is there, where we want to focus on the social and emotional wellbeing of our, uh, staff and our students. We want to look at reducing the number of expulsions because we all know that when students are out of school and they're expelled, that they are, um, they're home. And so we want to make sure that we are providing opportunities within the district that we are not only just giving our students the support they need academically, but with their behavior, um, and putting things in place to be able to get, uh, support them. And then reviewing our district safety plans. We just got an update from our, um, our office of, I don't want to get it incorrect because you changed the name, but we just got an, an update from that team. Um, but also just the board having insight and understanding what our safety plans look like um, and making sure that we, um, are monitoring that. And then student outcomes. Um, our superintendent has a goal, academic goal. Um, and we don't want, want to be able to support that because that's the reason why we're here. So we have our priority statement, um, for student outcomes. And then our actions, we want to, um, continue to monitor our special education performance and even, uh, putting together some type of focus group. I heard that from our early childhood and I was like, yes. Uh, proactively putting together those focus groups and getting those task force and getting that feedback from our stakeholders. Um, partnering with our Richland Two Foundation. They do a lot for our students and our teachers. And so we want to look at ways to partner with, um, partner with them. Because we know that if we can create a pipeline, and our district is already doing some of those initiatives. But if we can create and some additional pipelines and opportunities for students to enter into education and to come back and teach in our district, we have so many different outlets. But finding ways that we can partner with our Richland Two Foundation to be able to offer some additional financial incentives. Um, and then also looking at our educational opportunities for our students that are expelled. Uh, I think that was also mentioned, um, earlier as well with reducing those number of expulsions. Um, and then for governance, because that's what we are here for and that's what we do. We have a priority statement. We would like to, and this copy isn't actually the updated one, but I'll just share. Um, we have an action that we want more partnerships, but we also want to get out in the community and hear from our partners and our, um, constituents. Um, and so that is establishing town halls, uh, partnering with our legislators, um, our delegation, and being able to introduce and have those discussions, um, within our community. Um, policy review and revisions, um, that is a priority for us for board governance. And then continuing to bond and build, um, the, the connectedness on the board through team, uh, team building activities. You heard the board in our last board meeting, we highlighted, um, the fact that we had such an engaging conversation, dialogue, and activities that brought more of that connectedness and understanding and knowledge of who we are. And so we want to do that so that we can be effective in our service with you all. So board members, that, um, is just the update. Um, if there are any discussions or anything that you all would like to see adjusted, uh, we just want to make sure that we get it documented so that we can move forward and, um, working towards our goals with these action steps.
Do we have any comments or questions from board members?
Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Dennis.
Yeah, uh, when we was looking at that document, I, I, I want to challenge each of our board members. Everything on there is great, but I, I truly believe, being new to the board and going, looking at things, our policy review and revisions is actually going to tackle a lot of that. So let's not wait. Let's get in there and get it done and then start getting it out there. I think that's going to actually do a lot for ed-, the education. It's going to do a lot for our safety. It's going to do a lot for human capital. And then one of the questions we have to ask ourselves, whatever we're going to do forward, we got to make sure that we have the funding to do it because it's a great idea. But if we don't have the funding, then we need to find the funding. And that's where we need to get with our legislators and stuff like that. So I just want to make that challenge to each of my board members.
Any other board members? Okay, um, Dr. Scott, did you have something to add?
I do not. I would just say to Mr. Dennis, I, um, totally agree with what he said. So I would love to make sure that we are lobbying with our legislators. Thank you.
Okay. And I'd like to add, um, I'm glad you mentioned the policy review. Um, I, I would ask that Ms. Washington share, uh, Ms. Tanidra Washington, share a copy with everyone, um, of the suggested policy review from the South Carolina School Boards Association, just as a guide to help divide it up. They've given this suggested, so you can of course do your own, but, but based on timing and how things are done typically in a school district. So for January and February, the policies that you can review on your own, I challenge my colleagues to do this, is to review, um, Section A in our policies and Section K. And then, um, and then that would be for January and February. And if you've already done those and, and reviewed those and, and had nothing to, uh, alter or share, I would suggest going to Section G, which is personnel. Um, and I have heard some folks, um, share some things about personnel, um, that they wanted to discuss. So Section G is for March and April, um, for human capital. So that would be great for us to start in independently and then coming together at board meetings at the end of the meeting, suggesting what you would like to review would be an appropriate time. Um, I also wanted to mention the employee satisfaction and working conditions town hall. I thought about that when Mr. Dennis mentioned, do we have, uh, the funding? Because I know that having a town hall would require, um, of course, facilities and so forth. So I just want to extend that to also maybe, um, using our own connections and, and establishing location and so forth and sending it out as an invitation for those to join us at a town hall. So, um, just as an idea, should we not be able to do that with funding, um, currently? But we could work together and, and those interested, um, in, in creating those and hosting them. So, and I'd be very much interested in doing that with any of you. Okay? Any other comments before we move forward? All right. Thank you, Ms. Washington, for your hard work in leading that discussion with all of us. All right, we're going to move forward to, um, Section 10, New Business Action Requested. Uh, 10.1, Approval of Safety and Security Committee. Um, and this is actually to, um, to reconvene this committee. May I have a motion on the approval of Safety and Security Committee?
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the convening of the Safety and Security Committee for the 2024-25 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Ms. Nash. Is there any discussion?
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
Is this committee a advisory committee or a special committee?
I'm going to move this to, uh, Ms. Nash to share. She has a, uh, I hope you're okay with that. If not, let me know. Um, uh, she has a presentation attached and she can give, elaborate a little bit more about this committee and.
Okay, so we do have an updated one that you guys will see in the upcoming days. Um, but so basically, uh, we, I know that we had talked before about special or advisory. And I think what it came down to is that this was a special committee mainly because we will reconvene and we'll vote every year. Is, is that right? I just want to make sure that, that's my understanding. Okay, so that's why we're doing that vote today, that it will be special and we will reconvene. Um, because we will change, like not everybody's going to be on there. Not everybody is available. Um, and so I think that getting clarity on that, that's where we are today.
Dr. Moore, is that your understanding too? Everybody that's here? Okay.
Well, also, let me have, um, Tamika Washington, if she doesn't mind, to share the policy with that. And I think that will help Mr. Dennis also, since we're talking about policies and actually he mentioned policies. So Ms. Washington, if you don't mind, would you share with him the policy that goes along with this? And I think that will be able to answer his question and then we can, um, move forward.
He has a, um, copy of the policy. In the policy, it does state that you can have a special committee or an advisory. So he, he said he has a copy of it.
Okay, I think that answered the question. Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to, um, read from the policy, just for all of those, since we're about to take a vote. Um, so special, you said it was a special committee? Okay, so the special committee is established to perform a specific task and is dissolved when the task is completed and the final report is given. Otherwise discharged by the board. Its existence and charge come from the board and its work is intended to support the board's work. The function of special committees will be fact-finding, deliberative, and advisory, but never legislative or administrative. The board chairman will accommodate board members' special committee preferences to the best extent possible. When more than three board members are interested in serving on the same special committee, the board will vote and select the committee's members. The board chairman will appoint the chairperson for each special committee, which we have already done, just FYI. When a special committee is established, the board will determine if the committee will consist of only board members or if the committee will consist of both board members and advisory members. Persons recommended by the superintendent and/or individual board members and subsequently approved by the board, which is what we're doing today, may serve as advisory members on special committees. Likewise, the board reserves the right to remove advisory members from special committees via vote. Representation on special committees should be broad-based with emphasis on persons with expertise or interest in the area being studied. A special committee cannot commit, commit the board of trustees or school district to any course of action, including but not limited to expending district funds, obligating the district financially, hiring consultants, hosting events, or entering into contracts or agreements. The role of special committee is solely to make recommendations to the full board. Additionally, special committee chairman will confer with the superintendent to garner the administrative station's perspective on a matter prior to presenting the recommendation to the board. And that was the piece on the special committee.
And Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
And just for clarification, just for the public, uh, so last time and, and for the board, just for a review or reminder of what we did before previously, um, last year we had, uh, we had both parent representatives, um, you know, from different backgrounds, one from sports background, one from special needs. Um, we didn't finish to get to continue, um, what we were looking at as far as special needs. So that parent who was involved in special needs will be returning this year. Uh, we also had administrative representatives who were, um, very much involved in our work and giving feedback. We had student representatives, which were switched out, um, because they rotate out between schools, um, high schools. And then, uh, we had a teacher of the year, um, principals, and then three board members were also a part of that. Uh, last year we were able to successfully put together, um, Stay Safe for the, well, it was a spring event that we had where we talked about, um, uh, hidden, hidden dangers, which was widely successful. And we had a lot of people that attended and actually, uh, the community wanted to do more of that. And really, that's what it really was supposed to be about, um, when we first started Safety and Security. Um, before I ever got on the board, that was what it was about, was bringing that connection between the board and the community and having some transparency, but also, um, just some, I think the parents were really happy to know about a lot of the things that we were discussing specifically around, um, things that they didn't know that about like, you know, Cheez-Its looking like, drugs looking like Cheez-Its. So there's a lot of information out there and so we will be continuing a lot of that and then bringing those, um, to the board for them to review. Thank you.
Okay, um, I think we are ready to vote. We've, we've given a lot of comments. Hold on one moment. Yes. Um, I believe it's convene, because it's the new year. So, um, that would be, uh, to approve the convening of the Safety and Committee. And I may have misspoke earlier. I apologize about that. All right, so we have the motion, uh, already made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Ms. Nash. We've given our discussion. Board members, if you could, please vote. And again, this is, um, item 10.1. The vote is seven yes, zero no, zero abstentions, and the motion passes. Moving to 10.2. 10.2 is, um, regarding the committee members. And, uh, I believe it's as presented and I do not have them presented in our motion. Um, so may I please have a motion with information?
Well, yeah, so you want the people in there. That's what I was saying before. Um, so it basically will be, let me go back to it. Um, and that's in the presentation there. So you'll see that there will be parent representatives, uh, there's two parent representatives, um, administrative representatives, that's really as needed. So I don't know how to clarify that. Um, but a minimum of four, uh, three Richland Two board members, two student representatives. And I'm sorry, I think three student representatives and then there's two principal representatives.
Okay, so the mo-, motion is regarding the committee, uh, makeup?
Yes, and mainly because we can't confirm the, nobody's committing until we have.
Understandable. Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. May I have a motion on the approval of the Safety Committee, Safety and Security Committee members?
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the members of the Safety and Security Committee as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been made by Ms. Williams and seconded by Ms. Washington. Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no, zero abstention, and the motion passes. Moving to 11.0, Agenda Items for Next Meeting. Let's take a look at the draft agenda for February 11th, 2025, regular board meeting. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our Vice Chair. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is February the 11th, 2025. The call to order will be at 5:30 PM, followed by approval of the agenda. Next, we will release to executive session. In executive session, the board will look at student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, breacher contracts, employment recommendations, and certified releases, and release to public session at 6:30 PM. We will then move to our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, followed by the consent agenda, which will include approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes from previous meeting, and classified employment releases and in-district transfers. We'll then have our public participation, followed by voting on executive session items, which will include student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, breacher contracts, employment recommendations and certified releases, and as needed for items discussed in executive session. We will then move to new business, no action requested. We will have a CATE program update and a budget survey results will be shared with the board. Next, we will have agenda items for the next meeting. We will review the draft agenda for February 25th, the 2025 regularly scheduled board meeting. And then move to our if-needed items of public participation, executive session, continued voting on executive session items. continued voting on executive session items if needed, conclude with board and superintendent comments and adjournment.
Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the next meeting agenda, or to a future agenda?
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, Ms. Williams?
I would like to make a motion to add Blythewood Academy to the, to a future agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion made by Ms. Williams and seconded by Ms. Washington. Any comments, board members? All right, board members, please vote. Would you like for her to restate the motion? Go ahead.
I motion to add Blythewood Academy to a future agenda. Yes. With updates, yeah.
Is that motion correct, Ms. Williams? Okay, board members, please vote. We have seven yes, zero no, zero abstentions, and the motion passes. Board members, are there any other additions or revisions that you'd like to make to the February 11, 2025, regular board meeting? Dr. Scott, is there anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, Ms. Washington?
So, I know that in the past, we've had an update on the enrollment for one of our schools, and I know I wanted to request an update on enrollment for all of our schools. So I don't know if I want this to be a presentation, or if we just need to get that in a report, but I, in thinking about all of the development across our district, I would like to request that we do get an update on the enrollment, as well as what's happening in terms of development in those particular areas for those, you know, is this elementary school going to see an increase based off of this development, and when do we expect those developments to, to be completed? Like, yeah, like a timeline of when those developments will be completed. So if we can, can get that, I don't want to request a particular date, but I do want to get some additional information from Dr. Moore first, and then, at the next meeting, I will, just to go ahead and put it out there, but at the next meeting, then I can request a particular date for us to get that update.
Okay, so this would be for a future meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to make a motion for this?
No, I'm going to wait till I get more information from the superintendent, and then figure out what date would be best for us to add it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or revisions to be made? Okay, we're going to move on to item 15, board and superintendent comments, and we're going to start with Dr. Scott. I know she's on the phone, but if you could, go ahead and start.
Absolutely, thank you so much. First, I want to say thank you to Ms. Porter for leading the meeting this evening, I really appreciate that. And Mrs. Washington, thank you so much for also making the lead with the board members' goals and evaluations. And to Ms. Nash, thank you for your willingness to step up to the plate once again to serve as the chair for the Safety Committee. With that being said, also want to say kudos to all of the students who received awards this evening. They are truly role models and our superstars, so I'm so excited about that, and want to say thank you to Kim Hardy, who presented the inspirational moment. I do apologize that I was not there, but Kim did an amazing job, so I want to say thank you to Kim as well, and to all of those who actually presented. And then, once again, I come to you guys, and I would like to ask for just a moment of silence for Mr. Allen Upchurch. Mr. Allen Upchurch served alongside me at Ridgeview High School as one of the school administrators. He was such a great person, a great friend, loved all of the students, and he was one of those people that, he took his job very seriously. But not only that, he would step in when needed. Example, he served as a school administrator, but if a math teacher was out and we could not find us up, he understood as other job, other duties as required. So he never hesitated to go into those math classes to make sure that our students receive what they needed when we could not find us up. So, if you don't mind, if we could just take a moment for Mr. Allen Upchurch. Thank you so much. And once again, I want to send my prayers and my condolences out to Allen's wife, Cheryl, his daughter Julie, who also attended Ridgeview High School when we were there, the Ridgeview family and community. Just want to say, our prayers and our condolences are with you, and also to Dr. Mack Fopsworth, because she was also one of the school administrators at that time. And again, thank you guys so much, thank you for filling in in my absence, and just thank you to everyone for all that you do, and I will end with this. Putting students first is my email address, is my motto, and really, is what I'm going to always continue to do as long as I serve on this school board. Everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Ms. Nash?
Okay, so, just want to say thank you to everyone who's still here. Y'all are amazing. Is Nicola still back there? Hi, Nicola. She comes, and so everybody that comes to these meetings, thank you so much for being a part of this process and being here with us. For everybody that made tonight happen, it was a wonderful, wonderful night. I sat at a lively table, and I just wanted to let y'all know that Dr. Helen Grant, yep, and myself, she had a great idea for an administrative choir along with y'all. So you just have to pick your instrument, and, you know, and then maybe we can get the Performing Arts Center, and we will all be able to play some instruments together and sing, if you got a good voice, if not, we're going to put you in the back. Isn't that right? Is that what we said? Okay, so, just want to thank, and the students, we had some really great conversations. It was just a really, really nice time, so just want to say thank y'all for everything. Ms. Tanijra, I know you worked really hard on all of this, and everybody, we, I feel appreciated, and I'm going to need a cart to carry all this stuff out. Thank y'all, have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Mr. Trapp?
Thank you. Let me, I just want to share a couple of things I've done this past week. This past Saturday, I want to thank the staff at, at the Carolina's Academic Leadership Network. They offer free seminars and classes for school board members, and I was able to go this past Saturday, spent pretty much the whole day in a training session. Some of the things they talked about was curriculum selection, smart budgeting, we went over Robert's Rules and parliamentary procedure, and it was really tough, because I spent most of the week outside, and to be inside all day Saturday was really hard on me. But it was well worth it, I really appreciate what they do, and it cost me and the district absolutely nothing for this day of training. So I want to thank them. Also, I want to thank the Columbia Urban League for inviting me to breakfast last Monday morning to celebrate the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And while I was there, one of the speakers, I pulled my phone out, and I hope nobody thought I was loafing on my phone, but I was putting a note on my phone, and this is basically the thought that I had. When we acknowledge the good works of others, it does not diminish the good things we do. I just really, I've seen so much hate the last couple of weeks, so much of it coming out of Washington DC, and, and it's from, it's not from one side or the other, it seems like it's from everybody, and it just really is discouraging, and if you, there's a lot of good, there's a lot of people that say a lot of good things in the world, and if you're ignoring someone and their positive message because of prejudice or bias, you're really missing out, and you're doing yourself a great disservice. And I want to thank the Columbia League for inviting me to that. And it was a free breakfast, too, I mean, that's, you have me anytime you have food, okay? Oh, you know, I had forgotten, the main reason I went was Dr. Moore was the keynote speaker, and I didn't want to miss an opportunity to listen to her. And that's actually true, I'm not, I'm not making that up. And the last thing I'd like to say is, seriously, the next time there's bad weather, if you need someone out on the road, I'm your man, okay? I'll go anywhere, don't matter if it's wind, snow, anything, large lizards, I don't care, I'll go anywhere. Anyway, with that, y'all, have a good evening, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Ms. Washington?
Yes, I too have to confess, I was out there that day as well. Mr. Trapp rubbing off on me being, taking these risks, but it was a great snow day. I want to say congratulations to our students and faculty and staff and award recipients tonight. Thank you all to our, and thank you to our inspirational moment, my Richland Northeast Cavalier over there, and every, thank you, Kim, for everything that you do for our community and bringing awareness and educating us. Kim does work hard. Want to say thank you, thank you to everyone from the South Carolina Education Association and Richland County Education, to our staff, our students, to Tanijra putting this together just for recognizing us, this work is difficult, it's not easy, but I do enjoy sharing these lovely, comfortable chairs with some amazing school board members. The Richland Two Leadership Conference was actually refreshing, it was a great way to start the year off with some really in-depth conversations with leaders across our district, very inspirational, just want to share a few nuggets from some of the presenters. John Maxwell said, "Success is not a destination, and the journey does not determine your joy, there is joy in the journey." John Gordon, the author of The Energy Bust, y'all, his book was rejected 30 times by publishers, and he did not stop. He talked about the importance of positivity, weeding out the negativity, feeding yourself with positive, and knowing that caring is actually the currency of being great. Michael Jr. was placed in a special education class for four years, and his teacher said some of the most negative things to him about who he was, who he wasn't going to be, and what he was not able to do. He decided to be curious about who he was, and instead of furious about it. He said, "Let conflict grow you, and humor can break tension." And the final speaker, Valerie Burton, said, "Growth is not always fun, it does require a lot of effort." I want y'all, I want to encourage you all to look yourself in the mirror and say this, first of all, breathe, because we do a lot, and sometimes we don't stop and just take breaths. But second of all, I want you to do this, I want you to look yourself in the mirror every day and say, "You got this, and you deserve this." Close your energy gaps, and you all have an amazing evening, and I can't wait to join you on my birthday.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Mr. Dennis?
So, real quick, Saturday, I got to hang out all day inside with a, one of our school board members, Mr. Trapp. I also went to the Calend School Board Boot Camp, which was really good, it cost us nothing, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. And then yesterday, I spent the time at the Palisades Center down at the USC. Our governor, Henry McMaster, the great state of South Carolina, he, he issued a proclamation yesterday for the International Holocaust Remembrance Day, and it was the 80th liberation of Auschwitz. And we had a slew of presenters, and we had Chuck Todd from NBC, the political analyst, he, he was the keynote speaker, and I'm going to tell you right now, it was a very sombering moment, and there, it gave great hope to the future of today, all right? Even though it was evil that we can't even fathom, it's going to set us right for the future, as long as we remember what the proclamation said, so look it up, and, but that's all I got, and I can't wait to see y'all on February 11th, because I got the inspirational moment. Ooh!
Ms. Williams?
Make it real quick, I just want to say, as an everyday purple warrior myself, Ms. Kim Hardy, I want to thank you for bringing awareness to ensure children with epilepsy possess incredible strength and resilience. Their challenges today will shape them into unstoppable forces of success and inspire tomorrow. Thank you to Richland Two Safety and Maintenance for keeping everyone safe during the recent, you know, inclement weather. Congratulations again to all of our students who received an award today. Prayers to Mr. Allen Upchurch's family, I had the privilege, and Ridgeview as well, I had the privilege of serving with Mr. Upchurch as the former chair of the Richland Two Charter High School. Again, just echoing Dr. Elkin Scott's words, he was an admin as well, and he would spend his, half of his day in the classroom, and so that was very admirable of him. And prayers to his family, Ridgeview family, and all employees that worked with him. Again, thank you to everyone for showing us appreciation this month, and just every month. I can't even say that it's just one month, you all appreciate us, it's every month, so thank you again. And last, Happy Board Appreciation Month to all my fellow board members, and remember our dedication to our schools, transform lives daily. Through our leadership, we inspire a brighter future for every student, and show that education is the foundation to endless possibilities. Again, thank you for your unwavering commitment to being purpose-driven and future-ready. Have a great one.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I'd like to thank our students that attended our board appreciation dinner this evening. They did a phenomenal job engaging in conversations with us and also showing appreciation, and they're very talented and incredibly smart, so I love any time that we get to sit down and have lengthy conversations with our students. So at my table, Blythewood High School, RNE, and Mueller Road were represented, and of course, we also talked about what we could do moving forward and requests that they had that, of board members, and I'll definitely share that with you all. And then, I also wanted to thank Will and his staff for making sure that our facilities and everything was prepared and safe for our students during the extreme weather. I did not go out in the streets. However, I did walk them a little bit in front of the house with the kids, of course, and we did learn that the streets were dangerous by slipping and sliding, which helped me engage in a conversation on why we have snow days, and talking about our buses, which our students also asked about this evening. And then also, I wanted to thank Ms. Ashford from Dent Middle School, that principal there blessed us with a beautiful song at the Urban League MLK Breakfast, and I did not know she was that talented, so y'all can tell her, I burst it, and I'm telling everyone. But she is a phenomenal talent, if you have not heard her sing, it's a true blessing. Thank you to SCEA for your appreciation shown, and also to my colleagues that have also shown appreciation in what you continue to bring to this district and this board, I appreciate you all. And thank you, Dr. Moore, your speech was enlightening and motivating, and I was very proud to be there and to also celebrate you as the keynote speaker, so thank you so much. Yes, and have breakfast. You know, I make sure, I always taste grits and say, hmm, I wonder if Mr. Trapp will approve, because he's our grit man, so. But yes, thank you for that, and we definitely appreciated the invitation. And that is all that I have, everyone have a good evening, I look forward to, oh, yes, yes, I'm coming to you, I'm coming to you. Oh, and, no, we already had Dr. Scott, so, yes, I'm looking forward to February, and then we're going to close with Dr. Moore, and I'm sure she has lots to celebrate.
Oh, I do, I do, but first, I have to say to Ms. Nash, for the admin choir, I'll be on cowbell. And for those that don't watch Saturday Night Live, you And for those that don't watch Saturday Night Live, you want to understand the cowbell joke, but, you know, more cowbell, that's where I'll be. It's hard to believe that last week at this time, we were preparing for snow across the Midlands. I do want to say, you know, our team strategized and executed a plan to keep students and staff safe. I don't know why, we had two board members out on the roads for those days, but our students experienced, uh, e-learning on Wednesday and Thursday, and then on Friday, we returned with a two-hour delay. And that was primarily driven by secondary road conditions and the ice not melting enough for it to be safe for our staff, as well as our buses and our student drivers. We have to remember, we have a lot of student drivers on the road. So, I want to commend our entire team, our whole Richland Two family for their support during that time. We did a nice video to help parents better understand how we make decisions during inclement weather. We produced a video titled, "Weather Why." It's been well-received with more than 900 views on YouTube in a week. Now, we did this because no matter what decision we make, we always get feedback. But we want people to understand what goes into making that decision. We do not take it lightly. We want students in school every single day, learning and doing great, wonderful things. Speaking of schools, I had school visits today, and I toured Center for Knowledge North, Mueller Road Middle School, and Blythewood High School. At Mueller Road, I attended, by accident, an award ceremony celebrating student achievements, because it was on my list to go visit, didn't know they were doing their awards, but it turned out to be great, because I got to speak to the students and to their parents. And then, I got to be a part of the, uh, teacher of the block, from H&R Block. They were doing that, too, so that was just an awesome, uh, experience. And as you can see, uh, that's our teacher for this month. She is the orchestra teacher, and it was just a great experience. I was also, let's see. Yeah, it was at Mueller, and that's Ms. Sarah Cathcart, uh, who is the orchestra teacher. And she's known for creating a safe space where students can practice in the morning, ask for help, and connect with peers across classes, and she's highly responsive to parent questions and feedback. She is a first-year teacher, and every student in that class has found a love of playing music for, uh, for their instruments. And so, it was just a great opportunity to celebrate a brand-new teacher and recognize the hard work that she does every single day for our students. Want to give the board an update on teacher engagement. While back, the board had asked that we do a survey of our teachers, and we did that using the Upbeat, uh, system or service, and I am thrilled to share these highlights from the teacher engagement survey. Look at that number, we had 86% of our teachers district-wide take the survey. That is higher than the national average. Anyone in statistics will tell you, that is like phenomenal to reach 86%. I would like to attribute to my video that I recorded, encouraging teachers to do it, but that may not have been the whole reason why they did it, but I think it was part of it. We also, um, NI staff is frankly, non-instructional, yes, are certified, and they were at 87%. And so, we are just so excited about that, and the feedback that we received, the majority of teachers felt supported and recognized for the hard work that's being done. The best part is, this isn't just data for us. We have a strategic plan to turn these numbers into actionable steps. Each principal in our district will partner with an upbeat coach to address opportunities specific to their school. So, we are very excited about this, as a part of, you know, making sure we're creating that environment where our family members will want to stay and bring friends with them, because we are a great place to work and to educate students. And I cannot end tonight without thanking our board, as we honor them in Board Appreciation Month. So, as we close out our school board appreciation, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to our school board members. Your dedication, insight, and commitment to our students, staff, and families really means so much, and the time and the energy you pour into this work, often behind the scenes, makes a tremendous impact. And I shared that tonight with the students that were in attendance at the event, because most people don't realize that our board members work all day, all night. When they go out in public, no matter where they go, people talk to them, because they know they're board members. And so, it's really hard not to be on duty, not to be dressed appropriately sometimes. You know, it's like, hmm, but they still, even when they have those situations, they still stop, take time, and talk to our community, and we greatly appreciate that. So, because of you, our district continues to grow, thrive, and move forward. Your leadership shapes the future of this community, and we are incredibly grateful for all that you do. So, thank you to our board members for what you do every single day for our students. If no one else has told you that, let me say thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. And I, I'm sorry, I forgot, I did not say thank you to our staff members who also joined us for dinner tonight. They definitely added to our conversations, and I learned that Ms. Footman was an expert in secondary math, and, um, and then we also had another mathematician at our table with, um, Principal Mac, and I just feel like we have some talented folks, and, go ahead.
And if you don't follow us on social media, please do. One of the interesting things we've been doing during Board Appreciation Month is top three, and I learned some things about my partners up here, the top three, but I'm not gonna share any of that, I want you to go and find out for yourself. But it was very interesting, uh, favorite song, mm.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. All right, um, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Washington?
I move to adjourn the January 28th, 2025 regular board meeting.
And is there a second?
Second.
Can we have a hand vote? All in favor?
My vote is yes.
And Dr. Scott voting? Yes, she hung on. If I could, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, that means we have seven voting yes, no, uh, zero nos and zero abstentions, the motion passed, the meeting is adjourned.